Good evening. It is now six thirty PM and I would like to call the Board of Education meeting to order. Would everyone stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic where wishes stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, appreciate it. Moving on to announcements, we will start with Mrs. Wilson. Oh, Madam Secretary, would you please call the robe?
Mrs. Kostic. Uh, Mr. Ivory.
Here.
Mrs. McConnell.
Here.
Mrs. Rose.
Present.
Mrs. Ross.
Mrs. Ross.
Mrs. Wilson.
Present.
President Wilson.
Here.
We have seven present.
Thank you. Moving on to announcements, we will start with Mrs. Wilson.
Join us for a tour and celebration at the Glen Barton School ribbon cutting on August twentieth at ten thirty AM as we honor the legacy of Glen Barton, a dedicated servant to Peoria and visionary leader at Caterpillar on what would be his birthday. This school brings together three remarkable programs: Day Treatment, PAT Treatment, and Rise Academy, all under one roof. We look forward to seeing you there. Do I go over ahead and read both of them?
Uh, yes ma'am.
Alright. One more, the house system rollout. Many Peoria Public Schools have launched the Ron Clark-inspired house system district-wide, uniting students and staff in four houses: Amistad, Rivair, Izzy Bendy, Altruismo, each celebrating their unique strengths. Designed to build belonging, boost school spirit, and connect students across grade levels, the initiative has already reduced absenteeism and discipline issues in pilot schools. We look forward to even stronger attendance, engagement, and character growth through friendly competitions and celebrations.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Washington.
Physical exams, October fifteenth is right around the corner. All incoming kindergarteners, sixth, ninth, and twelfth grade students must have the required vaccinations. Schedule yours now before the deadline. Twelfth grade students must have their required vaccinations. Also, parents of kindergarten through eighth-grade parents, please visit peoriapublicschools.org backslash page backslash grade level topics to see this year's instructional plans and key learning benchmarks for your child's grades. It's a great way to know what your student will be learning and what you can focus on at home to support them.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, uh, thank you. Also, would like to acknowledge you, acknowledge our new school students, uh, board member. Um, if you like, would you like to introduce yourself to the, to the public?
Uh, Derek Washington, Peoria High. Thank you, sorry. Derek Washington, Peoria High Senior.
Glad you're here and can join us, sure. Uh, Peoria Public Schools is proud to offer the IB Diploma Program. This is an academically rigorous two-year program that prepares students for college and beyond. Why choose IB? Challenging coursework recognized by top universities, up to twenty-two percent higher acceptance rates at elite colleges. Focus on critical thinking, leadership, research, and global understanding. Important dates: Applications open August first, two thousand twenty-five. Application deadline, November third, two thousand twenty-five. Parent Information Night, Wednesday, October first, two thousand twenty-five. Visit your school counselor starting August first to apply. Grants open. Applications for Peoria Public Schools Foundation and CFCI classroom grants are open now through September first. Peoria Public Schools teachers and staff can apply for three grant options: Up to one thousand dollars for classroom projects, one thousand dollars five, uh, fifteen hundred for STEM, grades five through twelve, and five hundred for field trips. These grants help bring creativity, hands-on learning, and real-world experiences to students. Apply today online at www.ppsfoundation.org.
Good evening, everyone. STEM Saturdays are back. Bradley University is, is hosting DAPSEP STEM courses for fourth to, to twelfth grades, September sixth through October fourth. Explore robotics, um, aerodynamics, coding, AI, and more. You may get more information at three one three eight three one three zero five zero. And that number again is three one three eight three one three zero five zero. STEM Saturdays at Bradley. Seven Mindsets. Peoria Public Schools is, is, is starting the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six year with our first mindset: Everything is possible. This mindset encourages students to dream big, um, believe in themselves, and push through, and push through challenges. It, this is a reminder, with the effort and, um, determination, anything is possible. Let's make it a great year.
Thank you. Mrs. Rose.
The Wraparound Center. Congratulations to Dr. Micisha Mitchell on becoming the new Director of the Wraparound Center and Community-Based Social and Emotional Learning. The Wraparound Center, located on the Latrobe side of Treewind K-8, is a one-stop shop for Peoria families, offering therapeutic support, food pantry access, case management, and housing guidance. Open Monday through Friday from eight AM to four PM, the center welcomes not only PPS families but also community members. Call three zero nine two eight two nineteen nineteen for more information.
Thank you. Ms. Ross.
Thank you. Good evening. First ABBET District Meeting. Join us Thursday, August twenty-first, first twenty-two-five, from four to five thirty PM at the Administration Building. ABBET stands for Advancement via Individual Determination. Builds skills, confidence, and a college-ready mindset for students in grades six through twelve. Offered at Lincoln K-8, Peoria High, and Richwoods, ABBET also shapes a school-wide culture of success. Let's kick off a great year of student achievement.
Thank you. Ms. Kostic.
Good evening. Read thirty minutes a day. School bells ring, a brand new start, books in hand, a curious heart. Thirty minutes, page by page, reading opens every age. Stories, facts, and worlds to find, growing knowledge, growing mind. Each day's chance to learn and play. Reading thirty minutes lights the way every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Remarkable Spirit Awards. Dr. Nicole Corey-Mosson.
Good evening, President Dr. Wilson, Vice President McConnell, Superintendent Dr. Karat, and members of the board. It is my distinct honor and pleasure tonight to recognize and celebrate three of our Remarkable Spirit Award winners. So, if I could please have Principal Katie Cobb, Susan Klysath, and Stephanie Hanselman come on up to the podium. Alright. So, these ladies have done something truly remarkable for us this summer. I was interested in trying to find a way to have our incoming kindergarten students who are coming from Valeska Hinton Early Childhood Center get a jumpstart to kindergarten, because as we know, we expect reading by the end of first grade. So, we have no time to waste. Through networking with some colleagues, um, who use the Waterford Early Learning Program in other states, I modeled the Waterford Summer Ramp-Up Program after a partner school in Indiana. Uh, basically, the idea was for our incoming kindergarten students to be exposed to early numeracy and literacy concepts through the Waterford Online Early Learning Platform in the comfort of their homes this summer with their parents. We created a six-week challenge and offered the program to our Valeska four and five-year-olds in preparation for coming to kindergarten. The program did not cost us anything, as we were able to use licenses of students who had already completed the program during our summer months. What it took was a lot of manpower to properly load iPads, train all the parents on how to use the program and the platform at home, and then weekly check-ins, troubleshooting, encouragement, all of those types of things with our families. We are super proud to say that we had eighty students participate in this program, and seventy-two of those eighty students met the full six-week challenge, which means they participated for a minimum of four days a week. I asked Katie Cobb and Susan Klysath if they could be the ones to spearhead and advertise to the parents, create a checkout system, set up the iPads, and train all the families. And they said, sure. I asked Stephanie Hanselman, who is a veteran kindergarten teacher at Northmore, uh, and a Waterford Super user, if she would be the family connection and support all of our families throughout the entire summer. And she said, sure. So, they took this idea, they really ran with it, they brought it to life. Took a lot more work than I, my little, you know, brain thought up, but, um, they really ran with it. Uh, Stephanie stayed in touch with families, helped those who had issues as they came up. Um, that meant calling families every day who weren't meeting minutes or checking in with those who were having problems to see what supports they needed. She also created certificates for all of the students who participated and, um, communicated with all the principals. So, now we know in each school which of these students have already had this jumpstart, and we can track and see their progress over time. Um, next week, they'll take the Early Learning Assessment in Waterford, and we're really excited to see where they place. Um, so if they place above where an incoming kindergartner would be, they will get to start advanced in that program and be on their way to fluent reading even faster. So, we're really excited to see the results of that. But just wanted to take this opportunity tonight to say thank you to these ladies, um, for going just above and beyond all summer to make this happen. Um, we now have eighty kindergartners coming in with a lot of just incredible skills, and, um, that's thanks to all of your efforts. So, thank you so much.
Just want to thank you for this incredible opportunity. Our students and families loved it and really enjoyed it. So, thank you so much.
And I'd just like to thank the parents as well, because without their support in helping their kids through the program. And one other thank you to Michelle Seifel and Renata and Shannon in Research, because we did have a few glitches along the way with rollovers. And, uh, reaching out to them, within twenty minutes, they had us reconnected, they had students reconnected, and we were able to continue with the program.
I just joke that I talk to some of the parents so much that they could probably come to my house for Christmas, so. I know, but they were super receptive, the kids loved it. They, if they had a troubleshooting problem and I couldn't get them on immediately, they're chomping at the bit because their kid's ready to get back on. So, we made it as quick as possible, and they were excited to be on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have La Monica Pettit.
I'm sorry, La Monica was not able to be here today to present this award, so I'm gonna stand in on her behalf. Um, Dr. Karat, President Wilson, Vice President McConnell, members of the board. Um, this award, um, is being bestowed upon Maria Rodriguez. Um, she has, let's see. La Monica told me that she was an incredible support for her, and as an employee, to have someone who will work alongside you to help you along, um, it's wonderful when someone does it just on their own, but to do it, um, over and over again for people that she comes in contact with. She has an incredible spirit of joy, um, and is always incredibly kind. So, for that reason, she is being, um, presented with this Remarkable Spirit Award, is Maria Rodriguez.
Okay, thank you, Lord. Um, thank you Board of Education. Thank you, Dr. Karat. Thank you, La Monica. Um, well, this award means a lot for me. Um, I'm originally from Mexico, so it's no easy to come in another country with another language, another culture, different even food. Um, but the most challenging part is, um, that your family is far away from you. So, when you are sick, when you are sad, or when you are happy, as I am now, um, they are not here. Uh, but even though they are not physically here, um, they are present in everything I do. So, from them, I learn to be brave. From them, I learn to help and to serve with all my heart and with love. And that is why I try to do every single day here. So, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. I have been working for more than three years here, and I have responded more than nine thousand requests. So, and every request for me is an opportunity to serve to one of our students. So, thank you so much. Gracias.
Up next, we have Dr. Letitia Clemmons. Um, so moving along, looks like they are absent. We will move to item number six, Student Showcase. Dr. Annette Coleman.
Good evening, Board President Wilson, Vice President McConnell, board members, and Superintendent Karat. I'm happy to introduce you to Peoria High School Senior Phoenix Foy. Uh, Phoenix had the opportunity to attend Seven Mindsets Ultimate Life Summit for, uh, students this summer in Orlando, Florida. The ULS is a transformative opportunity for students across the country to come together and immerse themselves in Seven Mindset activities. The Peoria High School Administration and staff said Phoenix was a clear choice to attend ULS because he has a positive mindset already. He holds himself and his peers accountable and is genuinely a great young man with goals and aspirations. The way he carries himself in the, in and outside of the classroom is top-tier. Phoenix will briefly share with you about his time at ULS and how he plans to use his experience in Peoria Public Schools.
Hi. Hello. Oh, okay. Okay, so, my time at ULS was an amazing experience, because when I first got there, of course, I felt displaced and nervous, because I didn't know anybody there or didn't have anybody that I came with, like the other students. But as time progressed, I met different, I met a lot of new students, people from all across the world, people from London, Honduras, Dominican Republic, oh, a few other places. But I met people from all over. And one thing I noticed that we all had in common was that we all shared big dreams or goals that we all wanted to accomplish that just seemed out of the box compared to the students that I normally go to school with. Um, it taught me seven important steps to success. The first one is know what you want. The second one is know why you want it. The third one is know who you want it with. The fourth one is own it. The fifth one is be grateful for what you have now. The sixth one is stretch with your heart. The seventh is enjoy now and take action. I have been and will use these steps in my life to reach the goals I aspire to complete in the places I desire to be, because these goals have taught me that regardless of what anyone else has to say or what, what happens to me while I pursue these goals, I know if I put my mind to it, that it's possible. And it may take a while, it may take forever, but I know I can complete it by just keeping myself persistent in what I do and staying consistent in the work I put in. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Great job, Phoenix. We're proud of you.
Awesome. So, moving forward, we have item number seven, Community Contribution Award. Crystal Manis.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. Thank you, Dr. Karat, Board President Wilson, and the school board. I am very thankful to be able to be here today to recognize and honor the contributions that our Kamatsu Community Partners have provided to Lincoln K-8. Um, as I was reflecting on the school year, like in June, I was just like, wow, they, they really have done so much for my school and for my students here at Lincoln, and, and they deserve to be recognized for that. Um, the biggest thing that stands out in my mind always is at Christmas time, they provided a thousand dollars to three families so that those families could have food and go out and buy their students, um, Christmas presents. And, um, it was just a heartwarming experience for me to be able to give that gift to those families. But they've done so much. They helped with our landscaping at the school. Um, they have started a Lego Robotics team at my school from scratch. Um, when they found out that our scoreboard that we use for basketball games was not working, they presented me with a two thousand dollar check to buy a new scoreboard. Um, over the summer, I was like, they asked me if I needed help with anything, and I said, well, we have this like third-floor space that I really could use help cleaning out. He brought in a whole team. We didn't even have air conditioning that day, and we knocked it out, and it's now a, a really good usable space. So, I'm sure there's something I'm forgetting, but, um, they just do so much, and whenever I need anything, I know that I can call and, and they will be there for us. So, I just really want to thank them for all that they've done and, and will continue to do.
Good afternoon. You know, it's a, it's a real privilege to be able to give back to a community that is so undeserved. And then you have, uh, staff. Crystal is always just welcoming to us, and, and, uh, and it's just a pleasure to deal with, to speak with her and help her with the things that she's challenged with. We realize emphatically how important education and the value of our students are. We realize that the, we can't do this alone. We need the effort of everyone that's in that community to work together to make a better tomorrow for Peoria. We are so fortunate to have support, uh, from our senior management and from engineers. Uh, we've one here tonight, Rosie, who was a part of this, of, of area, and really is putting back. We're so excited to continue to foster this type of, um, relationship moving forward. I just wanted to say thank you, Rosie. You got something you want to say?
I'm just excited to help the kids exactly where I was from, from one fifty. Both my parents were from there, so just love to give back and give the children the opportunity they might not have had, and show them anyone can be an engineer, right?
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you. Um, up next, we have Dr. Sharon Karat.
Thank you, President Wilson. Um, our student board member Derek Washington is going to assist. I'm going to ask Andy King to the podium, please. So, it's so good to see you and thank you for joining us. Um, the Dream Center, I wanted to recognize the Dream Center and Andy King. And most of us know the Dream Center, um, has been doing the Backpack Peoria since two thousand and two, and they've given over fifty, fifty thousand book bags, five zero 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 zero. And Mr. King has had a some, uh, substantial impact on the city of Peoria since twenty oh three, um, breaking, you know, just really helping out as, we know the Dream Center, we have a collaboration with you. It's not just Backpack Peoria. Um, you're serving individuals who really need, uh, the most help at that time, whether it's through housing or food, whatever. Um, but I was touched by you, we know a board, um, approved the clear bag policy, and, um, you were almost done, um, getting ready to unveil the Backpack Peoria event that happened a couple of weeks ago. And, um, and I called you and I said, Mr. King, I need a big favor from you. Uh, I know it's late in the game. And we brainstormed some ideas, because the majority of the bags that were purchased, because you guys have hundreds of thousands of bags, because it's a big production, can you purchase some clear bags for us to give out? And other partners like, okay, call me next year, um, because it's too late. But you went above and beyond to, uh, purchase a, a, about a thousand book bags for families, clear bags for the middle schoolers and the high schoolers. And we just really appreciated you finding a way to come through, um, kind of at the ninth hour. And so, I, I wanted to thank you for that. So, um, thank you very much. Uh, Derek, if you can, uh, yes, I wanted, our student board members, this is first assignment to, um, I give him a handshake and, and thank him as well. Thank you.
I, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to serve the district like this. Um, it's been a lot of backpacks over the years. This year, it was two thousand backpacks, a thousand were, were the clear ones. And, um, we've always said we want to turn dreams into reality, and that's for kids on the first day of school, making sure that they're prepared, ready to learn, so they're not worried about a uniform or a bag or supplies. And we're just honored to be able to serve you guys in this capacity and all the others. This morning, we had over thirty-five students from our homeless shelter lined up, right, ready, waiting for the school bus to get to all the different schools throughout the city. And again, it's a partnership, and, and we love it. So, thank you so much for allowing us to be partners with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you need anything, let us know as well. I love our partnership, and I know our board does as well. So, thank you for going above and beyond for our kids.
Thank you. Up next, we have item number eight, District Presentations. Mick Willis.
On the screen for your review tonight is the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, preliminary budget. The next page that you'll see just gives you an overview of, uh, the team members and finance, and you'll note that, uh, two of our, uh, uh, team members are new in their roles, um, and we're onboarding those, uh, individuals as we speak. In terms of the budget process, this is a screen that you've seen before. Uh, typically, we have, uh, the board on display for thirty days, after which we'll ask you to, uh, approve, uh, the budget after there's an official hearing at our, uh, the meeting that we adopt the budget in. Um, but we present you, uh, the budget first. We have a thirty-day window where the public can come to view the budget, uh, that kind of thing. We then give, uh, the public, uh, opportunity to comment at a public board meeting scheduled the same day as budget adoption. And then, of course, we ask that you adopt a resolution to amend the budget or approve the budget, and that will be on September twenty-second. In terms of the entire budget, all fu, all nine funds, uh, we anticipate, uh, revenue at two hundred eighty-nine point nine million. We anticipate expenditures of two hundred ninety-nine point three million. The page that you'll see next gives you some highlights in terms of, uh, key assumptions as we put the budget together. Probably the most notable is the very first line. Uh, that's basically our state aid line, and typically, that increase, uh, on an annual basis is somewhere around four million dollars, four and a half million dollars. This year, um, uh, it was basically double that. Uh, the huge part of that reason, you'll recall back in twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, our corporate personal property replacement taxes, uh, which, uh, is one of the pieces that, in that formula, that kind of drives revenue to us. We received a couple of years ago about forty million dollars, and that dropped significantly. So, in the formula, uh, it- about forty million dollars, and that dropped significantly. So in the formula, it technically recognizes us as far less wealthy locally, and that kind of drove up this year's number. So that was the biggest change. Property values, we anticipate going up about 2%. The other noteworthy thing, long-term debt as of June 30, 2027, or 2026, will be about ninety million dollars. At the end of the 2021 school year, June 30, '21, our debt was about 151 million. So in six years, we've paid our debt down almost sixty million dollars, and that's all been intentional, and we are very happy with those results. In terms of our operating budget, this covers day-to-day expenses for the district. We anticipate that far-right column, revenue of about 251.6 million. We anticipate expenditures of 249.7 million. So we will have more income than we do expense, to the tune of about two and a half million dollars slightly over. Again, that unanticipated influx of state aid drives a lot of that. Now, back in April, May, we anticipated a deficit, and since April, May, we've been making reductions to our operating budgets, department budgets, and that kind of thing. So that also contributed to the results that you see right there. But at least, we're headed on the right path, more revenue than expense, one more fiscal year. This probably is, I believe, the sixth or seventh year that we've anticipated a budget where there's been more income than expense. We're probably coming to the end of that. This year probably will be one of the last years that we'll see that, mainly because we anticipate some losses on the federal revenue side in coming years. So we'll need to do some balancing in the future, but for right now, we're still in good shape. The second part of the budget is the non-operating side, and it's just those things like bond payments and capital projects and those other kinds of things. You can see those numbers there. So the 289.9 million in terms of revenue, the 299.3 million in terms of expenses reflects all nine funds, the day-to-day funds, in addition to those funds where we do a lot of one-time projects and one-time spends and that kind of thing. In terms of our, yeah, the next page is fine. In terms of our operating budget on the revenue side, this really just kind of gives you a picture of where our revenue mostly comes from. It's no surprise, the light blue portion of that pie is our evidence-based funding or our state aid. That increase has tipped us over the 40% mark. The last several years, that's been in the high 30s. The federal revenue that we've received basically from ESAR made our federal revenue higher in the last two or three years. And since that has now reduced, that also contributes to that state aid piece kind of being a bigger part of the pie. And then if you go to the next one, where you take a look at our spending, salaries, benefits, purchase services, et cetera, you can see that salary and benefits is no surprise, make up most of our operating budget. In terms of process on the next page, again, we'll have our budget on display at the receptionist desk, beginning tomorrow, all the way through September 22. Board meeting on September 22, early in the agenda, 7:00. We'll ask for a public hearing. Later in the agenda, we'll ask the board to adopt a resolution to approve the budget. That gives you a quick overview of our 2025-26 budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mick Willis on budget presentation? Saying none? Thank you. Moving along, we have item number nine, Presentation by Audience. An individual Board Policy 2:230, an individual may address the board at this time for no more than five minutes. With further time allotted as appropriate at the discretion of the chair and with the concurrence of the majority of the board, total time on any one subject shall exceed twenty minutes only at the discretion of the chair and with the concurrence of the majority of the board. Our first speaker will be Mrs. Mary Cunningham. Mary Beth Cunningham, my apologies.
Good evening. I want to note, as you know at the outset, that I have contacted the Public Access Counselor with the Illinois Attorney General's Office to request a review of whether the process leading to tonight's vote on the superintendent search firm complies with the Open Meetings Act. I was informed right here by our vice president that legal would be telling me that it is not against Open Meetings Act. That was an unexpected event that happened. I walked away, but we'll address that in a little bit as well. My concern is not about delay for its own sake. It is about ensuring the decision is made transparently, lawfully, and with full public engagement. The public has not been given key information such as the contract cost or clear outline of deliverables. I'm not coming to say we shouldn't have this firm. I'm coming to ask for transparency. In other major contracts, for example, recently the school safety equipment purchase, this board reviewed and compared proposals publicly before deciding even tabling that vote. That level of openness should be the standard and not the exception. The agenda also suggests that, excuse me, the list of firms was narrowed before any open discussion at all. Several firms are listed, but only one is being presented tonight. If that happened outside a properly noticed meeting, it raises transparency concerns and could conflict with the Open Meetings Act. At the very least, it is an issue of transparency and integrity. We've also learned that the selected firm with no known prior superintendent search experience, at least publicly facing, listed Peoria Public Schools as a client and began advertising superintendent position before this board voted, which still has not happened and will happen tonight potentially. This does give the impression the decision was made in advance. I want to add in this, and here I have two boys in the exact same physical classroom for algebra this year. One of my boys is an algebra brain. I saw someone nodding. One of my boys is an algebra brain, can do it all in his head. The other one has to show his work. There is a constant battle with my algebra brain kid about you need to show your work. But why? I got it in my head. Well, there's two reasons. When you show your work, you can catch your mistakes, and someone can help you if there are mistakes. And when you show your work, no one can accuse you of getting to the right answer by cheating. Even if you didn't cheat, he's not cheating in math. Are you joking? He's like a human calculator. My other son shows his work, knows this lesson, and this is a lesson I've put into my kids because it is a lesson that we need to know as adults in many avenues in our life, not just with algebra. I don't use algebra, but I use show my work all the time, and I'm asking the same of the board, the adults. The issues, these issues are more about, excuse me, are about more than one contract. They are about public trust. When concerns are raised at the podium, we're told to email. When we email, too often there's no response. When we raise that again in a meeting, we're told again to email. This cycle erodes trust. Board service is a serious commitment. Hearing repeated complaints about the time demands is discouraging. Each member accepted this responsibility voluntarily. Preparation, reviewing packets, emails, and relevant materials is essential. Many community members who aren't on the board still invest time to follow board matters because our children's education is at stake, myself included. We also ask that the interactions with the public, fellow board members, and district staff consistently model professionalism and respect. Public meetings should focus on collaboration and not tension. If more energy were devoted to the board's defined duties, such as following Robert's rules, complying with the Open Meetings Act, and ensuring transparent governance, instead of reaching into administrative duties, there would be more time to focus on the priorities that truly fall within the board's role. The decision, this decision, will shape our school's leadership for years. Please table this vote, compare proposals transparently, and ensure the public is part of the process. What's another two weeks? Anything less is a disservice to our students, staff, and taxpayers, and will not be forgotten. This board ultimately selects the superintendent, and I'm aware of that, and I respect that. And that should be done, though, in full view of the public. Transparency builds trust and confidence in your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Jessica Heintz.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm here tonight to share concerns regarding the proposed contract with From the Heart International for the superintendent search. While I do have questions about this particular firm and its qualifications, my focus tonight is on the process the board has followed in selecting this firm. Perhaps From the Heart is highly qualified. Maybe they bring unique experience that is not reflected on their website. Maybe the firm submitted, other firms submitted bids that exceeded our budget. All of that may be true, but unfortunately, the public has not been given the opportunity to see or hear any of it. As taxpayers, we have a right to know how our funds are being spent. As parents, we have a right to understand the board's goals in selecting a superintendent that will shape the future leadership of our schools. Hiring a superintendent is one of the most important responsibilities of any school board. But equally important is the responsibility to conduct public business transparently and keep the community fully informed along the way. In addition, I fear that beginning this process in a way that compromises staff and public trust does a disservice to the eventual candidate and risk casting a shadow over the start of their tenure. We can't afford that. For these reasons, I respectfully ask that you consider tabling motion nine and providing greater clarity around the selection process so that the community can better understand and support this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, uh-oh, hold on. Next, we have Ms. Kelly Phillips.
I apologize for the name.
Oh, no worries, no worries. Did I get the last name correct, Phillips?
Yes.
Phillips, okay.
I'm here for mostly reading. I don't want to ramble. Good evening, Dr. Krot, board members. I would like to speak tonight. My name is Kelly Phillips. I've been an employee of Peoria Public Schools for eighteen and a half years. I'm also a taxpaying homeowner in 61605 zip code. Brought some friends with me to support me. They've been told if I faint, leave me there, finish the statement. This evening, I'd like to talk to you about the situation that I was put into, in the hope that a policy could be put in place that would prevent it from ever happening again. I was, in addition to many other things, the receptionist at the Rappaport Center. I was told, all right, lost my place. I was told that the clerical position at the Rappaport Center was being eliminated, that my last day would be June 30th, that as of July 1st, there would be no clerical position at the Rappaport Center. It was going to become a school day-only building monitor. However, as of July 1st, there was a clerical sub at the Rappaport Center work every day. This was work I could have done. As it turns out, this was done to remove me from the Rappaport Center so that a specific person could be hired for the building monitor job. I would hope that a policy could be put into place that would prevent someone from being moved out of a position abruptly, left with no placement, no pay, no health insurance, just so that someone else can have the job because they're more familiar with the person in charge. I've been in that office since before the Rappaport Center existed, and I had hoped to retire from there. Now I'm 68, and I'm looking for a job. I would ask that you look at creating a policy that would prevent such, what felt like extremely personal and deceptive practices from happening again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Mrs. Leslie Danage.
Good evening, Dr. Krot and members of the board. Coming into tonight, I know there will be conversations about the superintendent search and possibly a financial discussion about approval items from the last meeting. I want to address those briefly before moving on to why I'm here. I think the solution to the superintendent search is an easy one. Publicly disclose the costs associated with the firm of the board's choice tonight, and then proceed. I was concerned to see that the online application reflects residency preferred but not required. However, in hindsight, there were several typos on the FTH website, and perhaps that was one of them. The PFT would like to see the board prioritize local candidates for the superintendent position and any other upper administrative positions that may become available after Dr. Krot has fulfilled her term. At the last meeting, there was some discussion about the Game Changers contract. I wanted to reiterate that our stance was and continues to be that any new contracts should reflect the same level of financial adjustment that the rest of the district implemented for this year's budget. The Children's Home, Family Corps, and both certified and non-certified staff all had reductions in contract amounts or force to reflect the financial strain to education from our current federal administration. It was a budgetary concern and nothing else. Tonight, I want to publicly address continued overages in class size. Our contractual class sizes are 21 for kindergarten and first grade, 25 for second through fourth grade, and 28 for fifth through 12th grade. Annie Jo Gordon's Kindergartens currently have 22 and 23 students. Charter Oak Kindergarten, 22, 22, and 23. Heinz Kindergarten, 22, 22, 23, 23. Northmore Second Grade, 27, 27, 28. Keller Second Grade, 26, 26, 27. Heinz Third Grade, 27, 26, 26. Keller Fourth Grade, 26, 25, 26. Sterling Sixth Grade, 30, 30, 30. Elise Ford Allen Sixth Grade, 30, 30. Liberty Fifth Grade, 28, 28, 29. Liberty Seventh Grade, 29, 29, 30. Liberty Eighth Grade, 29, 30, 29. Those were the counts on Wednesday, and they may have increased at some schools since then. I would also like to point out that even with projected enrollments that class sizes would be over the contractual limits, there were certified teachers cut from some of those schools last spring. Liberty, for example, cut two certified teachers and now has three grade levels that are over for class size. Keller had a retirement, and we did not hire a teacher to replace that section in that building. Heinz lost a full-time special education teacher and a part-time encore staff member, making it impossible to open a new classroom and be able to schedule that room for all of its encore classes, so their students were rerouted to CT Vivian after the kindergarten overage. At Charter Oak, the deaf-hearted of hearing programs are pushing into the kindergarten encore, leaving 28 to 30 kindergarteners at a time in classes like PE, technology, music, and art, which is now on a cart due to adding an additional second-grade classroom to accommodate overflow. A second-grade teacher at Northmore currently has 28 students in her second-grade class and was told we are not moving any of those students to the new room that was open for overflow students. On our visit to Sterling, teachers were getting streams from other classrooms to have enough for all students to work on their online platforms. While the PFT knows the administration's stance will continue to be one to two students over class size is acceptable due to the availability of resources, we just want to make sure that the board is aware of what's happening. I would encourage you to visit these classrooms and see what the reality of 23 kindergartners with one adult looks like, or what a line of 36th-grade students moving from class to class in the hallway is like. Currently, we have rerouted students from Charter Oak, Northmore, Keller, Heinz, Lincoln, Annie Jo Gordon, Sterling, and Elise Ford Allen. Schools receiving those rerouted students include Treewin, Von Steuben, CT Vivian, Glen Oak, and other schools, making this an issue that affects each one of your respective districts. As always, we invite you to reach out or respond with any potential solutions for this continued problem that is affecting our schools, and I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, next, we have Mr. Charlie Thomas.
All right. It's always a pleasure to be here. It's getting harder and harder to look at that spot over there, knowing she's going to be gone. She's did this district well. Um, I saw the, the teacher back-to-school program downtown. I was a chauffeur that day, driving people around, which I loved. They had Ron Clark. I, and I like a lot of things he does, but you know, we've had teachers in this district doing Ron Clark-type of things for a lot of years. I know one personally that's been doing stuff like that for a lot of years, so, uh, I, we have great teachers, and I, I can't say that. Shout-outs, I'm going to shout out to all the teachers who are back in the grind, security staff led by a great man if he's still here somewhere, uh, and the custodial staff who everybody I talked to said, everyone I talked to said, "Them, them buildings look fantastic." And you know, that's good for the kids, walk in there like that, and parents. So anyway, I'll get that out of the way. Those are all very positive things. Uh, speaking of something that's not positive, I hate to do it, but last board meeting, that was an embarrassment. I'm sorry. It was an embarrassment. I've been coming to board meetings a lot of years, probably more than most people in here, and I taught a lot of years. I don't know what kind of, what was that? I don't even know. I, I talked to other people that go to, uh, you know, Morton East Peoria. I have a few people I can call, but the way, I mean, it's like you're, it's like kids in the backyard fighting is what it reminded me of. Uh, you know, also some, some rules of, uh, of, the rules I thought were broke. We let someone get up and talk that didn't sign a card? I'm not sure I ever saw that. Now, I'm not saying maybe you can do that. I don't know, I've just never seen it. Cutting people off in the middle of talking, throw, mm, come on now. That's just wrong. That's little kid stuff. And then, unfortunately, in that same board meeting, we voted down a school safety program that probably would have been great. But yet, we gave a raise to some programs that absolutely make no difference in this school district. If you think that some of these programs make a difference, you need to go to the schools and to those places. It's night and day, night and day. The teachers work their butts off to get discipline, then when they finally do write somebody up, nothing happens. So some of that stuff is just ridiculous. Now, Mary Beth did a great job. She stole my thunder on the, the other issue I wanted to talk about, so I'm not going to go over everything I have written down, because she did a great job presenting. But I would like to say that, you know, okay, I'm, I have to read it because I, I can't memorize it. Uh, "The Heart International Education Services." Is that six words? I mean, that just seems crazy. Kamatsu. And by the way, Kamatsu, you see that cute little girl up here? That's my daughter. Graduated from Richwoods, just an engineer. Yeah, I, I'd go on forever. Buy me a beer sometime, we'll talk. Uh, but how does a company have six words in their name? Caterpillar, Kamatsu. Are you kidding me? It's like a made-up name, and I know nothing about it. That's just my opinion. Now, we also have a, a, a program, BM three sixty-five. I don't know much about it. I don't know much about it, I'm going to be honest. I, I talked to some people the last couple of days, it filled me in a lot of information. But I think, and listen to the word, I think the CEO is the same for both of those companies. I think. I'm not sure about that, but I got a pretty good idea. And I saw some names on the, the BM three sixty-five. A board member and a politician from our fair city of Peoria, Illinois. Now, I don't know if that means anything. I'm just throwing stuff out, you know, how I like to do that. Um, and you know, it's funny, the, the people on the board who's trying to get this one person, that a lot of you already know who that is, and I do, I've met him, he's a great guy, but he's not in a position to come here and try to take over what Dr. Sharon Karat's got done here. He's, I mean, he's a great guy, but he's not ready to do it. He's in a very small community. And don't say you haven't been reaching out, because we already know you have, and we know who's reaching out. And Mary Beth was so right, transparency, where, when was that lost? I remember back in the day, transparency was number one on District one fifty's website about everything. We don't have any. I, I honestly believe there's board members that don't even know what the other board members are doing. And then when they come to a meeting, it's like, what? It's just crazy to me, and the integrity by most board members is outstanding. But when are we going to stop letting nepotism, close friends, and money incentives drive our selections on important programs and personnel? Why? Why are we still doing that, allowing board members that are involved either, is that my bell?
That's the time.
Doggone it. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Dan Walter.
Good evening, Dr. Karat and board members. It's a pleasure to speak here. I just wanted to emphasize, and, and one of the comments that the, uh, PFT president said about the kindergarten size at Heinz School, I could attest to, because Friday I was a substitute teacher at Heinz, and I had twenty-three kids. Fortunately, three of them were absent, and they ran me ragged. Uh, my, uh, the phone thing used to be a thing that it's five o'clock somewhere, because I started drinking heavily again after I'd hung there. And I was, I hated to see the, uh, Lincoln principal go, because that's where I was this afternoon. I was there all day today, so, um, besides having been a board member here, uh, I'm substituting, and one of the reasons I did that was to find out what actually is going on in the school district and stuff with it, and we need some subs, and, uh, not saying I'm good, but, you know, they, it's needed. Um, one of the first things I wanted to start off with, uh, like Charlie did, start off with a positive thing. Um, I want to congratulate, uh, the board on supporting what Dr. Karat and Mick Willis and Dan Adler put together, uh, out of the stadium, that new dome that goes in there. I was fortunate enough to be on that committee for a while because of the generosity of Dr. Karat, and, uh, really, the credit goes from the people on that committee, Dan Adler and Mick, to make the thing work. And we're going to have just a state-of-the-art, uh, kind of dome and an assistance for the, for the whole district. So I wanted to thank them. The other thing I wanted to touch upon, and, uh, my friend here, Charlie touched upon it, was school board protocol. Having been sitting on the roundtable like that, and the attorney will tell us, "You have seven people up there. Each person has one vote. No one person has more power o- over the rest of you. You're just one vote. You want to get something done, you got to have four votes." And that's, this lack of transparency that's going on is what's concerning a lot of people that are having here. The, uh, there have been a number of things that there are protocol things. One of them is if you're not on the board, you understand it's protocol. It's not a rule, it's not part of your rules, is that. But, uh, if you're president of the school board, you appoint a president, and the next year, that person assumes the presidency. That's what we've done. There have been two exceptions to that. That was, you know, ten years ago, it's hard to believe it was that long. When there was a group called Change One Fifty, and they put together a plan, uh, to get rid of the existing superintendent, which they did, and, uh, Martha Ross became president of the board. And that next year, um, she decided, "I like it so much, I'm going to stay there." Dan Adler was the vice president, didn't get promoted. I was furious, I was on the board, I said, "Why would you accept that?" And he says, "Nah, he didn't want to do it, it's not Dan's style," is mine. But anyway, uh, Martha was there two years. The other exception for that was with the existing president, when, uh, Annie, Dr. Annie, who was a very qualified person, was vice president, was passed over for Paris. Uh, not a good look. It's not a good look, and it's not fair to a person who had put in time and who was eminently qualified, uh, for the board. One of the things I wanted to touch on was, uh, a couple of weeks ago, there was a protest in the south end of Peoria, and it was for a gentleman who had been a congressman and died, and we had this large protest there, and it was, it was about budget cuts to education, among other things. And so, uh, I, as, uh, took off my nineteen seventy hat, went down there and protested. There wasn't anybody from the school board there, and I was a little bit surprised at that, even though it was in District one, I think anybody, any school board member could have been there. But one of the speakers that spoke from that was Mario Boone, and he gave just an excellent speech. I was proud of District one fifty and for him to, you know, for him to, to be there and give that. And we talked about the choice, you know, of, we're looking at, um, getting some, when you go in and out of the schools, which I do, I can actually test, I go in, and you have to go through metal detectors and stuff with it. I've worked with the, the police force here for a long time, and I respect their judgment. And if, his best judgment, the one we had, is one we haven't agreed to yet. I think we ought to take a look at that and listen to the people who are experts in that. In searching for the new superintendent, uh, I was on the board when Dr. Karat was presented, and I voted for her as an interim. I voted for her as a superintendent. Don't regret those votes, it was probably two of the better votes I had, uh, at that time. The one thing that I was involved with when I was on the board was the Illinois Association of School Boards. They have a regional office, and I was one of the board members that went to that. And, uh, I think you ought to be, listen to these people, and I know I'm going over my limits, but I'm just saying, you got to be careful, because we represent twelve or thirteen thousand students, a couple of thousands, we're the fourth-largest employer in Peoria. We have to be careful what we're doing, that we don't give the impression that we're not, we don't know what we're doing and how we're doing it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andres Diaz.
Good evening, board members and fellow concerned citizens. I'm here this evening to implore you to do the right thing by our community and our children. The hiring of a new superintendent is the most critical decision that this board can make. Your decision will impact the lives of not only over thirteen thousand students and teachers, but the community as a whole, which leads to my concern. Your selection of a firm that has no experience in these matters, and according to their twenty-twenty-two ten ninety-nine filings, their largest success was finding jobs for some teenagers in Tennessee, I have a problem with that. Along with the no transparency or very little transparency in this process, and it's very troubling. Having been involved in similar processes, I can speak from experience and tell you that the choice you make in a selection firm can make or break the process and the outcomes. I ask that you publicly release the bids submitted in the minutes of the meeting where the decision was made. This is an easy ask if you feel confident behind your decision. As elected stewards of taxpayer funds, I pray that you use good judgment and wisdom in how you proceed. Finally, in regards to the published timeline, it seems as if this board will be making a decision at the same time as new people are running for election to shape this community and this board. I implore you, put in an interim superintendent and leave the hiring to the upcoming board. I believe it's a practical solution that can give this board time to mount a comprehensive and thorough search for the future leader of our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Emily Lee.
Good evening. My name is Emily Lee, and I am an actively involved parent of two kids in the district, as well as a taxpayer who cares deeply about the future of our schools and the community. I am here tonight because I am concerned about the lack of transparency in the superintendent search process. This is a financial concern, yes, but even more, I see this as a strategic opportunity that if we have the input of the community, can select a new superintendent, uh, for a successful first year, get them set up for success from the beginning. When a school board chooses a search firm, there is a standard process that should be followed. With only six, uh, business days between the close of the bid and today's meeting, um, I'm a little concerned that the selection of FTH as a search firm was made in a rush, almost as if the decision was already made prior to the bids being accepted and reviewed. So everything so far has happened behind closed doors, uh, and now it seems that FTH believes they're already been hired and have started doing the search itself to actively recruit candidates. So I think Peoria needs strong leadership, um, and that leadership comes from a thorough and thoughtful search for the right person, not just a person. This decision will shape our district for years to come, and we deserve a search firm that has a proven track record. We deserve transparency, and we deserve best practices, not shortcuts. Please make the right choice for our students, our teachers, and our community. The future is full of possibilities, and you have the power to lead us down a positive path. So I ask that you table the vote on the superintendent search firm recommendation this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Ms. Andrea Tortura.
Thank you, President Wilson, Vice President McConnell, Dr. Karat, board members, and administrators in the room. I'm here to ask you to postpone the vote on choosing a superintendent search firm until after more information is shared and discussed publicly. To be transparent with you, I think of the board and parents as partners. Like you, I care deeply about all the students in our district. I've been a parent in this district since two thousand and eleven. I have a Richwoods graduate in college and another child at Richwoods. I serve on my school's PTO. I'm a longtime volunteer reading buddy at Elise Ford Allen Academy. I've served on many district-level committees. A few of them include, uh, one that studied alternate start schedules for the high schools, the stopping the literacy summer slide, alternate calendars, the Peoria County School Facility Sales Tax Campaign, and the District Strategic Plan, which the board adopted in two thousand and twenty-one. But back to my reason for being here. School boards should operate like a city council. In choosing a superintendent search firm, the details for each bid for service should be shared and discussed publicly by the board. The public should know some background about each firm, their proposed costs, their record of success in serving districts comparable to ours. A vote should only be taken after considering publicly all aspects of each firm's capability. The vote should not be part of a consent agenda. I urge you to seek the counsel of your board attorney in this matter. I researched the, the firms that were listed. One of them, McPherson and Jacobson, has one hundred and thirty-five national consultants, twenty-three active open superintendent job postings, and over one thousand one hundred superintendents that they have placed in the past thirty years. The company being recommended to serve our district, From the Heart International Education Services, shows Peoria as its only open search and their CEO as its consultant. I'm not sure how the Peoria search can be listed on their website before you, you as a board has voted, but there it is. Additionally, the CEO of From the Heart is also the CEO of BH three sixty-five. That company provides a stellar Black history curriculum. Mayor Rita Ali sits on the BH three sixty-five advisory board, and a listing of the BH three sixty-five team includes a Martha Ross. If that's the same Martha Ross that sits on our school board, this should be disclosed. Perhaps Mayor Ali and Ms. Ross know amazing things about From the Heart, and that is why they're recommending this firm. But the lack of acknowledgement about these connections creates an appearance of impropriety. Yes, choosing a superintendent search firm is a board decision, but the decision should not be made in the dark. The Illinois Open Meetings Act applies to public bodies, including school boards, that are supported by tax revenue and that spend tax dollars. Again, I urge you to seek guidance from your board attorney, or the Illinois Attorney General, or the Illinois Association of School Boards, which in two thousand and twenty-four created a guide outlining updates to the Open Meeting Acts, the Open Meetings Act. The guide offers examples from previous court cases about information school boards should share with the public, like contract costs, before taking a final vote. I am just one of your many constituents. I'm one of the people who chose you to represent our interests around the horseshoe. We want to know, and we deserve to know, why you think From the Heart is the right choice to find our next superintendent. Please postpone tonight's vote until we can achieve transparency and public discussion about all aspects of this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker will be Ms. Astrid Swan.
Hi there. Hi, everyone. Um, so many speakers tonight have already articulated many of the points I wish to make, so I will keep this brief. Um, my name is Astrid Swan. I live in District one fifty, taxpayer, I live right across the field over there. Um, my kids attend RGA and Heinz, and I've been a parent in the district since two thousand and nineteen, so yes, my first year in the district was COVID, uh, at-home learning, so, uh, great start to education, but we're here. Um, so in this time, I've had a lot of friends in the district. So in this time, I've had a lot of friends in the district. I've gotten to know my kids' teachers really well, consider them as friends. And some people that I hear about the district is that many decisions don't seem to be student and teacher focused, which I believe everyone can agree that student and teacher focus is the number one goal of a school board. And I'm not a teacher, but funnily enough, I have a lot of experience in RFPs, or requests for proposals from companies. It's what I do for my job. And it's honestly, my son would call it sus. It's sus to see someone advertising a position on their website before a decision has been made, because I'm sure that's not free. At my job, I would not be claiming a client that I hadn't signed yet with their logo on my website. I would get fired, like that, I would lose my job. So I'm just saying, it's a little odd to see. Also, why choose a firm that has zero experience over someone who has thousands of placements? It's like telling my 10-year-old to make a grocery list. He's never done it. He knows what the store is. He knows what's there, but can I trust him to make a comprehensive grocery list? Absolutely not. He needs to show me he can do it before I'm gonna let him do it himself. It's just, it's common sense. I also question not looking at our own community members, the Grow Your Own program. I think it's a fantastic part of District 150. I am sure, even in an interim position, there's someone in our area who'd be able to run this district with the level of expertise and just being involved counts, right? Like someone from our community is going to care, rather than someone coming in from the outside. Overall, I believe this vote should be tabled on voting for the firm to do the search for superintendent. I believe this just shows a concerning pattern of foregone conclusions for decision-making by the board. I can only think of the clear backpack that was apparently a foregone conclusion when it was announced before it was voted on, or the modified year-round schedule that apparently was decided on before parents were asked their, asked their opinions. So yeah, please table the vote, do the right thing by the students, parents, and teachers, and staff members in this district, the week of the best leadership possible moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Item number 10, response to audience presentation. Dr. Karat.
Thank you, President Wilson. The overwhelming increase were about the superintendent's search, so this is the board's lane. I will not touch that. I will address Ms., let's see, who was first? Mrs. Danage regarding class size. I know she talked about a couple of things, but class size specifically. And thank you, Ms. Danage, for, for, you know, just bringing it out there. I think, you know, oh, the teamwork, my team works with you and your team on a regular basis, and actually, this is, this is how it's done. The first, the first couple of weeks of school, the attendance at the start of the school year, class sizes are either they're too low, or they're too, too small, or some of them are just right. It's a little wonky. And my team, Dr. Ick, Dr. Cora Molson, Dr. Bond, Dr. Coleman, and Dr., yeah, Dr. Cora Molson, they, they meet with the union, and essentially, the role is to have a conversation about it. We provide them with all of the information, all of the schools, all of the rosters, and so forth. They look at it, and they talk about it, they problem solve. And so they've begun doing that. They've had a couple of meetings already. Some, some things have been rectified. And so administration, and we talked about it in executive session as well, so I think the board just wanted to know, administration and the union, they're continuing to work, and that happens. It's an art and a science, and it doesn't get solved overnight. The good news is, our enrollment, I receive our enrollment data every day. It's 12,990 students, and we've just started. Usually, we see an uptick after Labor Day, so we're in a really, really good space. I just appreciate our families' belief in the quality of education that our teachers are providing and, and, you know, the district is providing, so that's, that's a good thing. So Ms. Danage, you were going through, like, this is, this one has this, and this one has 30, and I, I think it's a good problem to have. It's just you and Megan continuing to work with, and you guys know what to do. If you, if you, if you're at, you know, if you, you're not able to come to some resolution, then you guys pull me in. But overall, I think you guys have done a really nice job problem solving, and sometimes some people get upset if they have 12 kids in the classroom or 10 kids in the classroom, and we have to shut that class and reroute that teacher. But we've done this for, you know, for many, many, many years. That's how it's done. So we'll continue to do that. So I guess the moral of the story is, we are, along with the union, because they have a big part of that responsibility as well, we're working closely, monitoring class sizes every day, and talking with them, and then they're problem solving that. So I wanted to share that. And then just with Ms. Phipps, I think she left, but Ms. Phipps has a clerical position that was eliminated at the wraparound center due to board. You remember a couple of programs, Day Treatment moved, and Rise moved. Dr. Coleman offered her to move as well. She had her job. Since the kids left and staff left, that, that's what she did. She worked for them. She refused to move, so she asks HR to place on a recall list. So that's, that's the moral of the story as far as that's concerned. So just, we want to be fair. We want to listen, and we want to problem solve together, because there's always, you know, there's always a nice way to continue amicably, because that's the work that we do. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Karat. Item number 11, approval of July 14, 2025 minutes. Madam Secretary.
Yeah, motion. Yes, she did. Yeah, so moved. Second.
Madam Secretary.
Mrs. Kostick.
Like, no rules, right? No rules anymore?
No, we're currently conducting business. I'm not sure what's, 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 uh, what we're talking here. Yeah. Madam Secretary, would you please call the row?
Mrs. Kostick. Mr. Ivory.
Yes.
Mrs. McConnell.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson. President Wilson.
Aye.
We have seven ayes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Information items. Item number one, superintendent update.
Just quickly, President Wilson and board, and our listening audience, and our stakeholders that are with us, we would like to extend our heartfelt thanks to the entire Keller School community for showing all of your love and support to the family of Nola Lobdell. The outpouring of love has been a beautiful and powerful testament to the power of, of the Keller community. The pinwells that surround Keller School, along with the community adorned in pink on Friday, helped to show that this family, how much they were loved and supported. I know a number of the little kids from Keller also attended her services as well, and they were very sort of, it, it was very painful for them. And I know the Keller community and the teachers and the parents, I think Jessica as well, they collected a nice donation for them, too. So for all of you who knew and love Nola, you are in our thoughts. So that was number one. And then I just really wanted to thank the ROE. They're a big partner of ours, providing PD, professional development for our teachers. We had a, we had a, one of our meetings, instructional leadership meeting today, and Ms. Donath reminded me that they're providing coaching and, and professional development for really the schools that are most in need, and I just thanked them for that and appreciated, appreciated that. So they're, they're working collaboratively with us, and we, we love it. And I wanted to also thank the team, the, you know, Ms. Donath, Dr., Dr. Metz, Coleman, Dr. Quaji, all of you all for, we, we committed this year to especially the schools that are most in need, go in there, listening to them, being a partner with them, whether it's through their PLCs, or their ELT, or the principal meeting, whether it's if they're in need of tutors, or the, the systems of support, so more support from curriculum. So I, I felt really good about just you coming back and sharing how excited they were to have that additional just ear and thought partner. So I, I'm proud of you for that. Thank you. It was a vision, and it's great. So thank you very, very much. And then just quickly for our families, I don't know, Ms. Seifel, if you have that, the ICANN statement, we invite all of our parents to visit, visit our instructional topics on grade levels, like, so you can go to our websites, and where do they go, Ms. Ms. Donath? They go to, they're the grades right here.
Yes. So you can kind of see at the top. Oh, well, that works, too. Yes. So these critical benchmarks and ICANN statements for grades K1 and 2, this is a brochure that shows the resources. What are we focusing on for our youngest learners in this example? Can you go to the second page? Scroll down just a bit. Awesome. Thank you. It's, it's printed or printed in a brochure format. So you can see on the left are critical benchmarks for our students to focus on are listed there, and these are things families can do with their students at home. For example, one of them says, count to 100 by tens and ones. That can be done at the dinner table, and focus on these things that are really critical for mathematics and reading success. And then you'll see the math standards and ELA standards listed there.
Yep.
And if we go to the sixth grade example, so for our older students, we have math, science, ELA, and social studies ICANN statements listed, and these are the, the ICANN statements that show what students are going to be working on over the course of the school year. So families know exactly what students will be focusing their learning on, and can find ways to continue to support them. We encourage our parents to reach out to teachers to see what they can do at home in these topic areas. To get to this site, so it's on the Curriculum and Instruction tab at the top, under Academics, and then Curriculum Instruction, and then Instructional Topics by Grade Levels. That's where the parents can find them.
Thank you. And I know, Ms. Tortora, you mentioned parents as partners, and I really believe in that. And one of the things I've seen in my 30 years in education, when, when, you know, parents work collaboratively with the schools, those students tend to thrive very, very well. So we were meeting again today. We spent, you guys spent, curriculum spent a lot of time over the summer and over the years, perfecting the ICANN statements. So if parents would like to know what their kindergarteners should know, or any one of those grades, they can kind of go on there and take a look at it, and even challenge your children as well. So just wanted to announce that, to thank you, Mr. President.
Awesome. Thank you. Item number two, under information items, financial update. Mick Willis.
Year-to-date revenue through August 11, 23.4 million. Year-to-date expenditures, 14.6 million. This time last year, income was 8.4 million. Expenditures were about 16.7 million. And just a reminder, the budget column on your report will be blank until our September, till after the September 22 meeting, when the budget for the 2025, 26 year is adopted. After that, we'll drop the budget numbers in, and we'll have actuals to budget comparisons. But for the first couple of months of the, of the fiscal year, it basically is just the straight trend information, revenue and expenditures. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Willis? Seeing none, appreciate it. Item number four, report on requests under the Freedom of Information Act and status of such requests.
Thank you, President Wilson. Since our board meeting on July 14, we've received six new requests. There are four total requests currently open, and we have received 41 requests for the 2025 calendar year at a total estimated cost of $2,050. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. We are now at the moment for our consent agenda. Vice President McConnell.
All right. Consent agenda items are, number one, gifts to school. Number two, payment of bills. Number three, human resource report. Number four, adult meal prices. Number five, Center for, Center for Prevention of Abuse, Errands Laws, Mandate, Program Plan, and Budget for 2025, '26. Item number six, tentative agreement with the Peoria Federation of Support Staff Local 6099, IFT, and AFT, and AFL-CIO. Number seven, pay increase for, for off-schedule employees, administrative personnel, non-certified. Item number eight, pay increase for, for off-schedule employees, certified administrative personnel. Item number nine, approval of retention, employment of a superintendent search firm. Item number 10, manual high school volleyball team. And, Sir President, that, those are the items for the consent agenda.
Awesome. Thank you. Are there any items that board members would like to pull?
I'd like to pull item number nine.
Item number nine, thank you. Any additional items that board members would like to have pulled? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, who, please, oh. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of item nine?
Still moved.
Madam Secretary.
Mrs. Kostick. Mr. Ivory. Mr. Ivory?
Yes.
Mrs. McConnell.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson.
Aye.
President Wilson.
Aye.
We have seven ayes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number nine, approval of retention slash employment of superintendent search firm. Mrs. Wilson, you pulled, if you wanted to start discussion.
Okay. I, here we are. I would like to propose that we take a step back and share the proposals that we have, including the costs, so that making public knowledge, and that we revote publicly at the next board meeting. I just did my, I just did the OMA training today through the IGSB, and it clearly stated that our decision should be made as a majority, which would be, would be made by a group, and that all of our votes should happen in a public setting. So I feel uncomfortable about how we came to what we came to without doing it publicly. So I'm asking that we just take a pause and do the process again at the next meeting, but share everything so it's transparent and do it with integrity.
Additional discussion?
So in addition to all of our lovely audience presentations and a lot of emails and phone calls that I received over the weekend, I have something I would like to share. We need to select a search firm to help us find a new superintendent, but From the Heart should not be considered because they have demonstrated a lack of integrity by posting this position prematurely without receiving board approval. The posting was not only premature, but it was inaccurate regarding the number of students, the number of buildings, and the requirement of the superintendent to reside in Peoria. Supporting this firm damages the credibility of what the law requires as a transparent process. It damages the credibility of those voting to support this firm, and it damages the credibility of the entire board if this firm is used. And I want to know how From the Heart came to believe that they were already chosen when that's what we're supposed to be deciding tonight. It seems that they were already told they would be providing this service. I've also spoken with several superintendents, because as a former teacher, I have access to superintendents that I happen to know about the process of searching and applying, and learned that the best superintendents gravitate towards the nationally accredited search firms that provide lots of experienced things, like some of our audience presentations quoted, especially some of the ones that we received bids from. And so if we want to offer PPS the best candidates, we need to select a search firm with the most experience, and that has experience working with large school districts, because we are not like some of the surrounding districts around us that are one-school districts. We also, as a board, need to practice what we preach. If we are going to ask the administration to take more time and go back and do more to show us why we should purchase something, then we also need to be willing to go back and take more time to do things with integrity. We deserve, we as a board, we as a community, we as taxpayers, deserve an experienced search firm with a strong track record. We deserve transparency and best practices when making critical decisions.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion surrounding item number nine? And just to be clear, I think our week- And just to be clear, I think, are we going to, we would need to make a motion and a second if we wanted the table, but let me make sure, everyone, is there any other discussion? Saying none?
Does anyone know how this firm listed us already without our vote? Does, does, does anybody know the mystery? We're listed right now on their website, right this second.
Yeah.
Dr. Wilson, I would like to make a motion to table number nine.
Okay. I don't think she did. I think you, you, she asked that question.
I was proposing that we do it.
So I would like to make the motion to table number nine.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor? Need a second?
Second.
Has been motioned and seconded. Madam Secretary.
Mrs. Kostic. Mr. Ivory.
No.
Mrs. McConnell.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. Mrs. Wilson.
Aye.
President Wilson.
No.
We have four ayes, three nays. Motion carries.
Awesome. So next on the agenda, we have deliberation agenda, item number 11.
Yes, let me get to that. Okay, deliberation policy, number 11, policy number two, colon, 260 Uniform Grievance Procedure. I just, I just read it, so you second.
Okay, second.
Now it's time for the round.
Oh, Madam Secretary, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Kostic. Mr. Ivory. Mr. Ivory. Mr. Ivory. Mrs. McConnell.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson.
Can you, can you hear me?
Aye.
Yes, I can hear you now.
Aye. I'm sorry.
Thank you. We have seven ayes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 12, policy number two, colon, 265, Title IX, Sexual Harassment Grievance Procedure.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Mrs. Kostic. Mr. Ivory.
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. Mrs. Wilson.
Aye.
President Wilson.
Aye.
We have seven ayes. Motion carries.
Item number 13, policy number four, colon, 15, Identity Protection.
Second.
Mrs. Kostic. Mr. Ivory.
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. Mrs. Wilson.
Aye.
President Wilson.
Aye.
We have seven ayes. Motion carries.
Item number 14, policy number four, colon, 110, Transportation.
Second.
Mrs. Kostic. Mr. Ivory.
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. Mrs. Wilson.
Aye.
President Wilson.
Aye.
We have seven ayes. Motion carries.
Item number 15, policy. Policy.
Can I just interrupt for one second? I don't think we're making a proper motion, because we're not making a motion to vote on the item. So we should be saying that the proposed action has the board of education approve the attached updated policy. We can't just read it and vote, because then nobody knows what we're actually voting on.
The proposed
Yes, so read the proposed action.
A proposed action, policy number six, colon, 280, Grading and Promotion, item number 15. And the board, and the Board of Education, eh, approve the attached updated policy.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Mrs. Kostic. Mr. Ivory.
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. Mrs. Wilson.
Aye.
President Wilson.
Aye.
We have seven ayes. Motion carries.
Do we want to go back and do them all?
Do you need us to go back?
Is there any objections to just saying that parents made the motion to approve?
I'm not, any objections?
That's the way we have, we have always done it. It's a deliberation item, so.
Right.
Okay. Yeah.
I don't think I have an objection.
Then I think it's fine.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Presentation and suggestions by board members.
Our policy meeting, did we set it?
Yeah, August 20.
Oh, okay.
Reports from board committees.
Policy meeting is
August 20th.
August 20th, okay, at 9:30 a.m. Policy Committee. Thank you. Presentation will be coming to the, to the public on the, on the, at the next board meeting regarding the Master Facilities Plan. Board members should have received a copy of the, of the presentation already.
And procurement committee?
There's no, no updates at this point in time, Mr. President.
Awesome. I think Christine, aren't you?
They hit Brandon after the year. I don't know if it started though.
Okay. That's it. Okay. And just the announcement, Glenn Barton Ribbon Cutting will be August 20th at 10 o'clock. And I completely forgot to mention the boards here. So to my right, we have Board of Universal Possibilities by Dr. Maud Sanders. To my left, we have It's All About Mindset from Reservoir Gifted Academy. So if there's no further discussion, I would like to adjourn at 8:06 p.m.